Some creative things with wood that I didn't even know could be done.
In an age of activism, it's easy to forget where the practice first took hold. But no institution in America has been at it longer than the NAACP. Its chapter president from the 15th district is Dr. Cheyenne Bryant. L.A. This Week's Umeema Rashid was able to sit down with Dr. Bryant to discuss how the needs of the underrepresented have changed and how the NAACP has evolved to meet these new challenges.
Today, we're here with the lovely Dr. Cheyenne Bryant, psychology expert, community activist, and president of the NAACP chapter out of Council District 15. Welcome, Dr. Bryant.
Thank you for having me.
Of course. Now, most people are familiar with the history of the NAACP as a nation's premier civil rights agency, but can you explain more about the mission and why this organization is still relevant, given the progress that we made in the last century?
We've been around since 1909. We are the oldest and the biggest civil rights organization, not in the nation, but in the world. Our mission is to secure, you know, the political, the educational, the social, and the economical spaces in order for us to be able to eliminate the race-based discrimination, so that everyone can have eco-health care, so we all can have the right, you know, portion of justice and representation, so that our votes can be respected and they can be heard. And, you know, the thing is, I always say, you either gotta have a seat at the table or a voice at the door. You know, you may not be at the table, but be at the door and have a voice. We had Marla Luther King, who was a member and a freedom fighter, a part of our organization. The list goes on and on and on, as far as the individuals who are just game changers, who are part of our organization, who were the pioneers to show us a lot of the blueprint that me, myself, and the rest of our members and our presidents in NAACP are adding on top of that foundation.
I know that your passion is around, you know, the work you do in psychology and around mental health, so can you talk about how the mental health work that you do contributes to the work that you do with the NAACP in that heart space?
I've always studied people, and I had always had a really deep yearning-seeking-ness of understanding why people do what they do. And then, as I start to understand why they do what they do and where the trauma comes from and the impact that trauma has on people, again, I became more eager. And I said, well, if I can understand the trauma and I can understand the impact, then I can try to figure out a resolution. And if I can't resolve, of course, the impact of the trauma, then maybe I can help individuals learn how to cope. We have to be able to get to a space of really educating our Black community on the importance of mental health.
Thank you for the work that you do in the community. We definitely appreciate you for being here.
Anita, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
The Abilities Expo delivers the latest in independence tech. Celebrate African-American Heritage Month at a cultural festival, or enjoy a reading of love poems in Espanol. All this and things to do.
Abilities Expo 2020 is taking over West Hall A at the L.A. Convention Center, and you are invited. Abilities Expo is the nation's leading event for people with disabilities, their families, caregivers, and healthcare professionals. Discover the latest life-enhancing products and services and learn from free workshops. You also find the tools you need to increase your independence and fun. Abilities Expo 2020 happens February 21st through 23rd. For details, visit abilities.com. The Pan-African Film and Arts Festival turns 28. Since 1992, this L.A.-based Afrocentric Festival has showcased over 150 new films and over 100 fine artists and unique craft persons, all showcasing the diversity and complexity of people of African descent. Don't miss the 28th Annual Pan-African Film and Arts Festival, happening February 11th through the 23rd. For information, visit paff.org. La Palabra invites the community to share its love of poems. Come out to Avenue 50 Studio and enjoy poetry through an open-mic series, followed by a featured poet. La Palabra has been taking place since 2001. On Sunday, February 23rd, the program will present its Valentine edition. Be sure to check it out, beginning at 2:00 P.M. For more information, visit avenue50studio.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Saieda Pagan. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Okay, good morning. Good morning, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, February 21st, and this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield, Bonn, and Buscaino, Sidio, Harris Dawson, Weisar, Coetz, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, Oferl, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 10 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Coetz moves, and Mr. Harris Dawson seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Buscaino moves, and Mr. Lee seconds, next.
Madam President, there has been a request to continue Item 3 to Friday, February 28th.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order, next.
Items 1 through 6 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members, are there any specials on this, on any of these items? Can you see none? Go ahead and vote on these items. Just open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, let's... What's next?
Madam President, that takes council back to presentations or general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to introduce a very special group of students that are here today. Let's welcome the Anilo Valley High School. Can we all, you guys, stand up? Welcome. And I just want to recognize your teacher, Stella Conizak. Are you here? Wave. Thank you very much for coming and bringing our students. And Marion Arias, two of the teachers that are here accompanying our students, as well as teacher and administrative, admin intern, Jose Perez. So, welcome. I hope you enjoy your trip here at the L.A. City Hall. Thank you and welcome. Mr. Lee, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Good morning, colleagues. It's with tremendous pride that I stand here today and recognize LAPD Deputy Chief Dominic Choi this morning. He's been serving the residents for 25 years with the Los Angeles Police Department, and just last fall, he became the first Korean-American to achieve the rank of Deputy Chief. You know, growing up, I used to, I used to watch a lot of LAPD shows, and SWAT was one of my favorite TV shows, and unfortunately, there was never anybody that looked like me on TV. And so, I can't tell you how proud we are as a, as a community to have someone achieve this rank. Chief Choi and I have the distinction of being the two Korean-Americans who know the least amount of Korean, where we constantly have contests to see who knows more Korean. I'm not sure who's ahead yet, but, but we are so very proud. You know, we have actually been planning this presentation since last fall, when Deputy Chief Choi was promoted, but due to scheduling challenges and his busy schedule, we couldn't make it happen until today. And of course, since then, he has had even a more meteoric rise, because he's already been promoted again to the position of Chief of Staff for, for Chief Moore. Deputy Chief Choi is a Los Angeles native. He graduated from Canyon High School and went to obtain his Bachelor of Science degree in accounting from USC. But after college, Deputy Chief Choi joined the LAPD Department, and since then, he started as an officer serving in Southeast Pacific Rampart-Hollimbeck Divisions. In 2001, he was promoted to Detective with Harbor Division. In 2002, as Sergeant at 77th Street Area. In 2009, promoted to Lieutenant, served as Watch Commander in Southwest Area. And in 2014, he obtained the rank of Captain, Commanding Officer at Full Hill Division Patrol, and Commanding Officer of Risk Management Division. And then, also, Commanding Officer at Pacific Area. In 2017, Commander of Central Bureau Operations, appointed the Department of Homeless Coordinator, and in August of 2009, he was promoted to Deputy Chief and was assigned to Central Bureau Operations. Deputy Chief Choi, we, as a Korean community and citizens of Los Angeles, are so proud to recognize you today on this historic achievement. And at this time, I'd like to invite our Chief Michael Moore to share some remarks, but before he does, I want to take a moment to acknowledge and thank Chief Moore for his leadership. In a city as diverse as Los Angeles, we have to be intentional about creating diversity in the organizations we lead, and Chief Moore has done exactly that at the LAPD. But I'm sure Chief Moore will tell you the very same thing. He didn't promote Deputy Chief Choi because of being Korean-American. He promoted him because he was the best man for the job. So, at this time, I'd like to recognize our, our Chief, Chief Moore.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilman Lee, thank you. Madam President, members of the council, thank you today for this opportunity to say a few words regarding Dominic and his, his ascent, but more importantly, just the value that he forms, not just to the LAPD, but to all of Los Angeles. Dominic and I have known each other for nearly a decade, and what I've found him to be and why I've appointed him as my Chief of Staff is a person who possesses wisdom. He has a demeanor that invites conversation, that is a problem solver. He's not a person that invites blame. He's a person that instead tries to find the very best in every situation and figure out unique and innovative ways in which to satisfy, at times, competing needs. I'm reminded of his time when he worked in Pacific Area and, and with Councilman Bonn, and in challenging circumstances dealing with homelessness and, and residents that feel oftentimes were clashing and at odds, Dominic brought a calm, and he brought a sense of, of assurance that LAPD would be part of a shared responsibility of how do we find solutions? When we moved him and, and under Chief Beck to become the Homeless Coordinator in the Office of Operations and worked briefly for a period of time with Assistant Chief Arcos, again, he brought that same demeanor with the United, with Unified Homeless Response Center. The mayor and elected officials, as well as LASSA and other organizations, how do we work collectively towards dealing with the greatest humanitarian crisis of our generation? With my appointment as Chief, my commitment to this council, to this, to the mayor, and to the Board of Police Commissioners, was that I would form a base for the next generation of leadership within the LAPD, that it would be responsive to each of the community's concerns of Los Angeles, and that it would be representative. My efforts in the last nearly two years, I believe, is showing that we have that type of talent. We have a deep bench that is ready for added responsibilities. Dominic represents that next chapter. I'm proud to have him as a Deputy Chief of the, as Chief of Staff. I'm even prouder to have him as part of my senior team, and I look forward to even greater accomplishments as we move forward. Thank you so much for your time and your attention and this recognition today.
So, Deputy Chief Choi, you're breaking barriers and changing perceptions for young Korean-Americans on what a police officer can and look, and can and look like. And we want to thank you, and we want to present this certificate to you, but before, I believe we have some speakers on the queue?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lee. We've got Mr. Rue, followed by Mr. Bonn and Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilmember Lee, for bringing Dominic Choi today. The Korean-American community and the Asian-American community is so proud and so boastful of all of your achievements. But I do want to join in what you said, Councilmember Lee, about Chief Moore. We really commend you for your particular strength in looking for diversity and making sure that your entire leadership is reflective of the city of Los Angeles, and you're also forward-thinking about the next leadership and who's coming next. And, you know, it's not just Commander Choi, but you also have Blake Chow, Commander Blake Chow as well, who follows in the long line of Deputy Chief Terry Hara, Commander Paul Kim, and many others. But I know your former Chief of Staff, Bob Green, was a great guy. I mean, he was one of those stalwarts and who almost seemed irreplaceable. So, but because he retired, it was, I'm sure you had a hard time trying to figure out who to replace such a person. And I have no doubt Dominic is the one person who can step into those shoes, because those are big shoes to fill, and I know Dominic Choi is going to do an amazing job as Chief of Staff. I mean, his previous work in the LAPD is unparalleled. I know when I got elected four and a half years ago, a lot of folks told me about, "Do you know Dominic Choi?" And, and his, his record and his achievements were already legendary. And, and I think as such, his rise as Commander and Deputy Chief, and now Chief of Staff to you, is a testament of his character, a testament of, of who he is, and I am so glad to see LAPD with such diverse leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Mr. Bonn?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilman Lee, thank you for, for bringing Dominic in for this. You know, the chief mentioned that Dominic spent some time in Pacific. Not that long, really, because I don't get captains very long in Pacific, because you keep moving them on me. I was just doing some math here, and in the past 24 years, I have had 13 different Captain Threes in Pacific. And you actually may be the one I had for the shortest amount of time. It gets to the point where I'm like, should I even bother entering them into my phone? Because they're gonna, they're gonna get promoted, because that's the thing. Nobody moves on and, and gets shunted somewhere else. Everybody who serves as Captain Three in Pacific goes on to something higher and greater in LAPD. So, as frustrated as I get, because they, they move through so quickly, I always know that, that I'm getting someone who's outstanding and who is poised to be even more outstanding. So, I think it's a particular credit that I had you for such a short period of time, because it meant that you were, you were really awesome and that you were really moving fast. And I want to thank you for the time you did in Pacific. You were very well-loved by the community, and I want to thank you for the work that you did after you left Pacific and became the Homeless Coordinator for the department, because you did some amazing work there, and I'm very grateful to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonn. And Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And thank you so much, Mr. Lee, for bringing this presentation to recognize Dominic. Of course, we work very closely with Bob Green, and Dominic didn't miss a beat, and we had a history of working with him on homelessness as well. But I remember watching how Dominic moved and how he operated in the council and in the community and in the city, and I said, you know, I think this guy might be the first Korean-American to have this rank in the Los Angeles Police Department. But you never said anything about it. You never made a deal about it. You just showed up and did your job. And so, I think you're a testament to the department, but also a testament to the Korean-American community in this city, which means so much to Los Angeles. And I couldn't let this opportunity pass to, to compliment Chief Moore. This city is a city that breaks barriers and sets the tone, I think, for the rest of the country and the rest of the world when it comes to diversity. And so, Dominic, we're happy to be here with you today. I recognize, we're recognizing African-American women today during African-American Women His, during African-American History Month. We are the first African-American woman leading South Bureau under your tenure, Chief Moore, and so, we appreciate, we applaud you, and all we ask is that you keep doing more.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Back to you, Mr. Lee.
Deputy Chief Choi, as a council member and as Korean-American, as a Korean brother, I just want to congratulate you, along with the people who are standing behind me, many of the Korean-American leaders in our community, just congratulate you on this astounding achievement. So, thank you.
Wow. Well, good morning, Madam President and council members. Thank you for taking the time to acknowledge me. I think it's important that we all take a little bit of time every now and then to reflect back on our heritage, our ancestry, our culture, because you heard the word diversity many times from many speakers, and there's so, so much value in it. Understanding the differences and not the similarities are what makes us better as an organization, as a city. I want to thank Chief Moore for giving me the opportunity to get such a vast array of experience with LAPD, some of the things I never thought that I'd be able to experience and learn from. And if you asked me almost 25 years ago where, where I would see myself today, the Chief of Staff position was not even on, actually, it wasn't anywhere to be thought of. So, thank you very much. But also, being a command officer in LAPD, it's a challenging position, and none of us can do it alone. Over the years, I've realized it takes good leadership, good mentorship. It also takes a good support system, people to get the work done, because one person can't do it alone. And it also takes the community to make things happen, right? And it also takes the community to make things happen, right? And I'm so proud to be a Korean-American, chief of staff, LAPD, to have all those elements here. I have the community, I have my support staff, I have my leadership, my bosses. I mean, this is great, more than I can ask for. I feel young still, and I think, I know I have a lot of years left in this organization. And my commitment is to continue to work with all of you and with all of you to make this place a better place, safer city. Thank you very much. Really appreciate the acknowledgement.
And Chief, on behalf of myself and the City Council of Los Angeles, we'd like to present you with this certificate to show, just congratulate you on this amazing achievement.
Hold on, stay there. There's, they need a shot. Camera crew over here on the right. You're very welcome. Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. All right, Mr. Harris Dawson, are you ready, sir, for your presentation?
Very excited to be here today, right after the presentation that Mr. Lee just brought to continue a tradition that we started a few years back to during African-American History Month, to make sure we take a day to recognize the role and the contributions of African-American women, to lift them up and to tell their stories with a loud voice. It is our, you got to get in the, get in the shot. You all are in the media business. You got to, that's the ticket up there. So as important as folks know African-American women have been to our struggle, to building our city, to building a just and more humane society, we don't tell the stories often enough, loudly enough, and vociferously enough. Later in this, when this meeting ends, we'll get to recognize and adjourn in the memory of the first African-American woman to serve on this council, who we unfortunately lost last night. And we take this opportunity to celebrate folks who are legends and folks who are becoming legends. Today, I'm happy to be joined by Ms. Angelica Nwandu. She is our 2020 honoree for African-American Women's History Day. Ms. Nwandu is someone who you know, but you might not know that you know. The internet has a series of sites that are, that people get their news from. One of those sites is called The Shade Room. All of you voted for Nipsey Hussle Square earlier, about a year ago. Folks may not know that we got 70,000 signatories to a petition to do that because The Shade Room put on their site that we were going to consider naming the corner at Hyde Park at Crenshaw and Sloss in Nipsey Hussle Square. Angelica is the CEO and the founder of The Shade Room. The Shade Room has millions and millions of followers. This young woman is a child of Los Angeles, a first-generation American, went through our foster care system, went through a little bit of homelessness, went to one of our great universities, Loyola Marymount University, got a regular job like so many of us do that wasn't fulfilling her passions, decided that she wanted to be a writer, wrote a script, got invited to Sundance, but that didn't quite work out as quickly as it could. And so she started doing a blog, because she was a good writer. And so she put the blog up, and the blog got lots of followers, and people got, they tagged each other, and they got lots and lots of followers. And I hope she doesn't mind me saying this, because it's in Forbes, one day, one month, she couldn't make rent. So she put on her website, if you want to, on her, on her feed, if you want to advertise for $75, write us an email message. And suffice it to say, you made rent that month, right? And it turned into a major, major business that now corporations like McDonald's, General Motors, CoverGirl, all advertise on The Shade Room. And celebrities go directly to The Shade Room when they want to put out news about their work. Angelica, again, a true angel in our city, planted her business here in our city, and so it's just down the street downtown. She hired people from our city and has grown into one of the most important media sites anywhere in the entire United States. So today, we're proud to honor, for African-American Women's Day in the city of Los Angeles, Angelica Nwandu.
Thank you so much. I don't want to talk long, but you did mention that that time when I couldn't make rent. I think it was actually, a month from today will mark the day that I actually started The Shade Room six years ago. And when I started The Shade Room six years ago, as you said, I was facing eviction. And I was a graduate from LMU, but I had a 2.8 GPA. And at that point, I remember feeling hopeless. And so I'm happy that there are kids here, because I just want to tell you guys, like, what you see now is not necessarily indicative of the future for you. And so anybody who is feeling like they're not performing or they're not getting, you know, good grades or they can't get into grad school, I couldn't get into grad school, just remember that your life can change any day, any second, to be something that you've never imagined. So thank you for honoring me today. I'm really excited about this. I remember when I was younger, I used to make up stories all the time, and back then, my family used to think I was a liar. But I was really a storyteller who wanted to really sit in the identity of others. And now I'm storytelling, something I never thought I would be doing, but it stemmed from that. So always believe in yourself, and those qualities that you have that people may not understand could lead to your success in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilman Harris Dawson, thank you again for this very important celebration of African-American women as we celebrate our month. And it's a real treat and pleasure to welcome Ms. Nwandu. You are just an inspirational story, you know, during any day, not just during Black History Month, but any month. I mean, someone with the, who has an idea, who had the passion and the perseverance, you know, to stick it out. And so you have just become a media juggernaut. And so we're just so proud of you, proud of what you've done, and proud of where you're going. And as I said, you're just an inspiration to men and women of all ages and all colors. And it's especially, I think, significant that you are embarking as a real leader, pioneer in this, quote, "new media," in showing how we can monetize something that is fun, something that is a hobby, but something that's important to people. And so congratulations on your efforts. Keep up the good work, and we look forward to your future endeavors. Congratulations.
So on behalf of the City Council and the mayor, we want to present this certificate of recognition to you. It's signed by all of us in recognition of your work. Some of these people's names you'll recognize, like Mr. Busciano, because you had him on The Shade Room when he gave J-Rock the key to Watts, and others of us on the council. But again, thank you for all that you have done, but mostly thank you for what you will do and what you've meant to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Let's give Angelica another big round of applause. Thank you for being here. Congratulations. Michael Olivares, are you here? Do you want to come on up, Michael? It's Michael Olivares. Followed by Chad Kroger. JT Parr. Michael Sims. If I call your name, please come on up. Go ahead, Mr. Olivares. You have one minute of general public comment.
Thank you. Good morning. Hello, esteemed councilmembers and staff. Michael, I work with the American Lung Association whilst being a senior airman in the Air Force National Guard. This morning, I'm here as a member of LA Families Fighting Flavored Tobacco. And as a father, in all these positions, I aim to protect our community. Today, I'm calling on you to urge you and your colleagues to act now to end the sale of flavored tobacco in Los Angeles. Please support the introduction and passage of a comprehensive ordinance that ends the sale of flavored tobacco that includes menthol-flavored tobacco products. This is the favorite flavor of youth starting, and without exemptions, also like hookah. The recommendation from committee exempts menthol. This is a mistake that only places specific communities at risk. So again, we ask you to end the sale of, retail sale of menthol products. This doesn't focus on possession, thankfully. We would not support that, but it does put the focus squarely where it belongs, on the sale of tobacco products. Thank you.
Sir, what is your name?
What up? My name is Chad Kroger. Counsel, when I'm bummed, I party, and I feel better for a while. If the party's really sick, though, I feel better for longer. A lot of ragers have made me feel really stoked. Keggers at my buddy Danny's, foam parties, and bottle service at Hakasan. The ragers that truly make my froth peak, though, and this is beyond debate, are on a boat. Nothing feels as legit as being on a yacht deck with a linen shirt open, my body tight from a pre-vacay juice cleanse. What a freaking boost. One thing that bums me out, though, is that not everyone gets to participate. Why is it that only people like P. Diddy, Jeff Bezos, and my Uncle Ron get to experience the euphoria of being on a yacht? I think I have the solution. We need public yachts. 60 to 120-foot boats that can be borrowed like books from the library. The boat borrowers would have to do a lot of paperwork, which will blow, but I think it's necessary. With the public yacht program, our countrywide malaise would get sprayed away by jet ski water.
Thank you, Chad. Next speaker. Are you JT Parr?
What up, counsel? I am JT Parr. Chad is not exaggerating when he says that partying on a boat can benefit your soul. I suffer from anxiety. I often worry that my dad thinks I'm a whiner, but those worries disappear when I jump off a yacht's tuna tower. That's why Chad, who is too modest to include his role, set up the boat party. What a legend. That single day partying on the boat reset my brain. We stood on the bow and laughed with some nice girls from Denver. We also made friends with the crew, and I'm eager to read the graphic novel 300 that the first mate Darren loaned me. The benefits from the boat day were immense. That is why I believe, like Chad, that every American should enjoy the right to party on a yacht and/or rip on a wave runner. We should be more egalitarian when it comes to boats. We mustn't forget we are Americans. We do big things, like the Transcontinental Railroad or going to the moon. People may ask why public yachts, and I say because there's not a danker idea in the world.
Thank you. Next speaker, Michael Sims. Is Michael Sims here? Mike Greenspan? This is general public comment. Sir, you've got one minute.
Yes. Mike Greenspan, anyone but Wesson. Yes, that's March 3rd's coming along. And it was great to hear the guy talk about we shouldn't be having vaping products for teenagers. And you know what? I was here for that Dog and Pony Show by David Rue. Yes, what a Dog and Pony Show. But then, got to remember something. What about Herbie? $15,000 Jewel Wesson. That's right, folks. You see, this broad that used to work for him, Vanessa, now works for Jewel. And that's why Herb Wesson got a $15,000 contribution. I mean, it's real hypocritical that kids shouldn't vape, but adults could get $15,000 contributions in their former council presidents like Herb Wesson. I mean, how would I describe this hypocrisy? It sucks a dick like Streff and Fable, that's how.
Okay, next speaker. Red Chief, are you here? Come on up. Followed by Arnold Sachs.
Listen, good morning, you guys. The Red Chief Hunt. The epidemic has hit right behind here. We have 1,000 homeless people or 25 homeless people right behind our house right here that needs to be cleaned up. We have the funding, we have the knowledge, but we don't have the coordinator for housing to house these people. It's become really tragic when you see it in your own backyard. Please get that done. Please send the housing coordinator out there to get that done. I'm concerned about the homeless people and the way that we police them and getting them off the streets. The money's already in LSA. It's $470 million every year, and we have the epidemic right behind here. Whoever district this is, get on top of it, please, the Red Chief Hunt.
Followed by Patricia McAllister.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. And it's strange how this worked out, because I was going to come before the board, Board of Supervisors, City Council. You know, when they're doing the expansion at LACMA, which is a museum on Wilshire Boulevard, they happened to take down some sculptures of some African-American women, not African-American women, African princesses that were posing. They were in a courtyard next to the lamppost there. And so I was thinking, because you're having African-American Women Day, and you're having all these facilities for African-Americans, that maybe the county or LACMA should use those statues and put them in the areas where you're celebrating African-American history, because it would add a great deal of input to the African-American history and the journey that they've taken to get to America. It would really be helpful for people to understand. The only problem would be, is the writing that goes along with the museum work. You need to make three extra...
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you very much. Your time is up. Ms. McAllister, you want to come up? Yvonne Michelle Autry, are you here? You're next, ma'am. Go ahead, Patricia.
I'm Patricia McAllister. I'm not a first-generation African-American. I'm a foundational black American, okay? My parents, my ancestors were slaves brought here on a ship. There are too many Africans coming from other countries declaring that they're African-Americans, and first generation tells you they're not. So we've changed it. We're foundational black Americans, and we're holding a conference in Atlanta, Georgia. And you can contact Tariq Nasheed on YouTube. Tariq, T-A-R-I-Q-Nasheed, N-E-S-H-E-E-D. And it's in Atlanta, Georgia, on Saturday, June 20th, 2020. Get your tickets. Okay, here's the deal. I have proof here that we have housing, we have affordable housing, we have everything, but the city is not using it. They're holding it. There are reports that are published every year showing how many available beds. We've got thousands of available beds, and I'm going to give you more information later because they only gave me one minute today.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Autry, are you here? Followed by Armando Herman. You have one minute of general public comment.
For the record, I think that you should increase our speaking time. You have time for your presentations. This is democracy by and for all of the people, not just those that finance your campaigns. And for the record, I'm speaking to, I'm asking, and I, for the record, would like to encourage or discourage people from voting, from Kevin DeLeon. He seems like a decent person, but I think that we should close the borders. I see Americans, black Americans... I see Americans, Black Americans, who if they ever had Forty Acres, interview on reparations, no jobs. Even white and other Americans born here, no jobs, homeless in the street in Skid Row. I worked with L.A. Cannon Yusuf in Skid Row. Why are Mexican, El Salvadorans, Hondorans, Guatemalans given preference to Americans? They can't recover what they lost. Africa was taken. That is what imperialists do. And many of them are serial rapists, they're serial murderers, mafiosos, because they target me as they murder virgins. Close the borders and, right, we do not want this to be a sanctuary state.
Thank you very much, Ms. Autry. Your time is up. Mr. Herman? Ms. Autry, your time is up. I'm going to ask you to please take a seat.
So I'm here with my petition. For you, city attorney, one. For you, Paul Peppa P. Corretts. And for the rest of you, 14 knuckleheads that sit in this horseshoe. You see, homelessness experience is all about Gavin Newsom and the bitch Nancy Pelosi, who cannot impeach Donald Trump. God bless America. Down with the Democrats. Bury a hatch in California, Donald Trump. Show these white niggers, too, that we will save America and build California back from the homeless crisis, from the homeless issues, from all the African-American racial profiling that you white nigger city attorneys from the City Hall East have ejected. And I'm part of this. CF number 20000459, BS 298581, for the record. 42 U.S.C., 1983. God bless America!
Thank you very much, Mr. Herman. Your time is up.
Mr.
Herman, stop shouting into the mic. You've been warned in the past, sir. You continue to do it. Thank you, Mr. Streffan. I'm sure that's what you wanted to also mention. There are no more speakers in general public comments, so we're going to go ahead and close that. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Counsel has motions for posting and referrals.
Posted and referred. Are there any announcements, council members? Mr. Harris-Dawson?
11:00 a.m. in the mayor's conference room. We'll have a fireside chat with Angelica to talk about the history of her business and to give advice to new business starters.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harris, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow, Saturday, the 22nd of February, at 9:30, I'm having another community walk. It'll be in Glassell Park. We're going to meet at the intersection of Fletcher and Astara at Washington Irving Middle School. And every month, we pick a community in the 13th District, and we go door-to-door. We distribute resources for constituents at their doors so they understand what services and resources are available to them, so they don't have to come to City Hall. So I encourage anyone who wants to join us in doing this outreach to join me tomorrow morning at 9:30 in Glassell Park. And also, on Sunday, please join Congressman Adam Schiff and I in dedicating and unveiling the UNESCO World Heritage Site plaque at the historic Hollyhock House. Hollyhock House is the city of Los Angeles's first UNESCO World Heritage Site. We couldn't be more proud. And that will take place at 2:00 p.m. at the Hollyhock House at Barnesdale Park on Hollywood Boulevard at Vermont. Please join us, Congressman Adam Schiff and myself, for this incredible and celebratory designation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. There's a, I want to, Mr. Price?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. Just want to invite neighbors and friends to come out to Ciclavia on Sunday. Central Avenue is going to be shut down from Adams to about 104th, I think. It's no cars, no buses, just walking and biking and enjoying the sights on Central Avenue. It's a fun family event, activities along the way, and we invite neighbors, families, and friends to come out and have some fun this Sunday.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Price, we're looking forward to it. We're going to do the tandem bike, you and I, right? You'll be in the front, I'll be in the back.
Make sure to put that on video for the gram.
We'll get a brandy on it. And we've got a unicycle, Mr. Marquise Harris-Dawson. Looking forward to that. And that was one of my announcements. Thanks for covering that, Karen. So Ciclavia in South Los Angeles, we're all looking forward to joining you, Marquise, myself, the mayor. We are going to have a Watts Hub, so come join us down to Watts. And then after, Mr. Bonin and I will be at the Carnavale Festival on Sunday. We're bringing a little Venice to San Pedro. No, I don't think you're coming, but I just invited you.
Does Mr. Bonin know he's going to be there?
I just invited him. Just invited him in public, just right now.
Okay.
But Carnavale in our Little Italy piazza. So come join us 12 to 3 on Sunday at 638 South Beacon in our historic Little Italy District. It's going to be Venetian, a lot of great Italian food, and that's so L.A.
Okay. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the invite, but I do have other plans Sunday. On Tuesday, our 154-bed Bridge Housing Facility in Venice, called Pacific Sunset, will be opening. 100 beds for adults, 54 for youth, and we will be having a community open house there tomorrow from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., where people can come and they can meet the operators, Path and Spy. They're going to be running the place and get a look at what's going to be going on there. And that is from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. tomorrow at 100 Sunset in Venice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. I just want to commend you. I know it's been a tough road, but you did it. Congratulations.
One more.
Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Sorry. There's biking on Ciclavia on Sunday, and on Saturday, along Crenshaw Boulevard, down, on 48th, down to Western Boulevard, we'll have the Nike and Destination Crenshaw 5K Run. So we'll have hundreds of folks running along Crenshaw Boulevard, down 48th. Those streets will be closed to automobiles, bicycles, and skateboards, but it'll be a great 5K run, one of the first 5Ks that we've had in South L.A.
I have several friends running in that. Okay, thank you very much. Any other announcements, members? If we can all rise for adjourned motions? To rise for adjourned motions? Mr. Herman, it's time for you to exit the chambers, please.
Okay, you're disrupting the meeting.
You're disrupting this meeting. You keep doing it. You've been disrupting the entire time. Sergeants, can you please escort Mr. Herman?
You've been ordered removed. You're not doing it. Leave, Mr. Herman. Okay, I'm sorry we're delayed while Mr. Herman is shouting as he leaves.
Apologize for that, but that's a daily occurrence with Mr. Herman here. We're going to go ahead and start with Mr. Price. Do you have an adjourned motion, sir?
Thank you, Madam President. Members, I rise today with a heavy heart and ask that we adjourn in the memory of a real She-Ro, a real pioneer, a real trailblazer, the honorable Rita Dolores Walters. She was born in Chicago, the eldest of five children. Family moved to Kansas soon after. Her mom cleaned houses, her dad was a Pullman porter. During a time of great oppression for African-Americans, Ms. Walters was inspired to begin her career as a public servant, insisting on gaining respect wherever she went. She was one of the first Black saleswomen to take her place in front of the store during a time when it was expected that Blacks would stay in the back of the store. In addition, she was the only Black woman to serve on the L.A. Unified School District Board from 1979 to 1981. I'm sorry, 1991. It was there, she demanded that schools should be integrated and was furious when children in South L.A. were excluded. Most notably, Ms. Walters was the first Black woman to be elected to the Los Angeles City Council, representing the 9th District, filling the vacancy that was left when Gilbert Lindsay passed away. And I'm honored to be standing on her shoulders and by her side. As a city council member, she was a staunch advocate who was committed to ensuring that Black workers and other minorities gained an equal opportunity in employment and other activities. In addition, she was an early champion of questioning the police and their use of force against people of color and for making sure that the city hired a diverse workforce. She was a pioneer that laid the groundwork for Blacks and other people of color for generations to come. This was a woman who demanded to be seen, who expected to be heard, and she ensured that individuals like her were not left behind. She was fearless and apologetic and would not back down from a challenge or a fight. She was a graduate of North Carolina's Shaw University, received her master's degree in business administration from UCLA, had, has a son, David, daughter Susan, son Philip, a host of relatives. She was 89 years young when she passed away, and may she rest in peace.
Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Price, for bringing this very, very important adjourned motion. Before I start, I want to acknowledge the presence of another trailblazer, our own State Senator Gwen Moore, is with us today in helping us send Councilwoman Rita Walters off in the way that she deserves. Mr. Price went over all the biographical information. I think the thing that stands out for me about Councilwoman Walters is her incredible gentleness, kindness, and force of human spirit. You almost don't think of her as a politician, because she never lowered herself to the depths that politics can go and the ranker which people can relate to each other. Ms. Walters never, ever did that, and she did the little things. I can remember personal stories. My father was her pastor, and my father had a policy, if you paid your money and you didn't show up for a while, he'd go visit you. And so he said, you know, Marquise, you're interested in politics, you should go visit someone who actually won an election. So we went to go visit the school board member then, and she was extremely kind to me, and at every juncture, she'd check in. So when I graduated high school, she'd check in. When I graduated college, she'd check in. When I went to work for Community Coalition, she'd check in and just to see if you were doing okay and not ask for anything or ask for involvement. As we were preparing for this adjourned motion, one of my staff members, Belen, who's behind me in the yellow jacket, pointed out, she grew up in the 9th District when Ms. Walters was councilwoman. She grew up in the Pueblos. And she said, you know, they work, her family worked with the council office, and it was a letter that Ms. Walters wrote that allowed her father to get his citizenship into the United States. It's the little things, the things that don't make the news, don't get in the paper, and that you don't do a tweet about, that Ms. Walters represented the best of who we can be in. And so I thank her for her gift and thank her for leaving us with that example of another way to live and participate in civic life.
Mr. Rue?
If I could add to that, thank you, Councilmember Price, for bringing an adjournment for Ms. Rita Walters. She might have been the council member for the 9th, but after she retired, she came and lived in the 4th. And, you know, she was so kind. She came out to so many community meetings in the Miracle Mile, so actively engaged. And she might have been small in height, and she was very friendly and very approachable, but like you said, don't let that fool you, because she was fierce. And I had the pleasure to work with her. I had the pleasure to meet her on many occasions when she was a private citizen, but may she rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Rue. If I can just add, thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson, for calling me last night and letting me know that Rita had passed. You know, when Rita became the first Black woman elected to the city council, she was an example to women and girls throughout the city of Los Angeles, including myself. Rita was a real trailblazer and a pioneer. And just like the stories you have, Mr. Harris-Dawson, about checking in with people, when I first got elected to that school board, Rita would often check in with me, particularly around that horrible, horrible budget year, when we had those horrific layoffs that no one wanted to do. And I remember Rita knew how painful those votes were and those decisions, because they impacted the classroom every time we had to make those tough calls, and Rita would often pick up the phone and ask me, how are you doing? And she would check in with me on a regular basis. I often see her with her son, who took a liking to me, and so we had a really special bond. And she cared about people, but she cared about how we were doing as people, not as elected officials. So I just want to say that I know that Rita led with courage and conviction, and she was one of a kind. May she rest in peace. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to adjourn today's meeting and also in another pioneer who passed away in December, and she was also 89. And her name was Rosa Porto. And yes, it's that Porto. And I love pastries. People who know me know I love pastries, and I can't wait for Harvard or someone to come up with the all-carb diet. But Porto's Bakery takes it to another level. And I know all of us love Portos, and now it's an L.A. staple with five locations throughout Southern California, and they tell me the sixth one is opening in Northridge, a little closer. I know we're happy. But Porto's had a very humble beginning. It started in a small 300-foot bakery in Echo Park, opened by a husband-and-wife team who just arrived from Cuba after many years of struggle under the Fidel Castro regime. Rosa was born in Manzanillo, Cuba. Under Castro, her family faced many challenges. Soon after Castro took control, Rosa lost her job at a cigar shop, and her husband was sent to a labor camp. Rosa came from a long line of talented bakers, and her talent in the kitchen was well-known in her community. Although private citizens weren't allowed to own businesses under Castro, Rosa's reputation quickly spread, and she managed to support her family through her baking. In the 1970s, Rosa and her family were allowed to leave Cuba, and they arrived in Los Angeles with next to nothing. They managed to secure their first small loan and opened their first bakery in a tiny shop in Echo Park. Originally, Porto served food for the other Cuban immigrants, but that wasn't for long, because word quickly spread and the demand for her baking intensified, and they located to a much larger shop in Glendale, a place that many of us know and frequent to this day. And the Porto's family is an integral part of the Los Angeles community. And if you haven't been to Porto's yet, don't let the long lines discourage you, because the food is really that good. Customers travel for hours for their pastries and wait as long as it takes, I know I do, and they keep coming back because of the warm sense of community that the Porto family has created. Rosa continued working in the family shop until her late 60s, eventually retiring so she could spend more time with her grandchildren. Rosa passed away peacefully this past December, surrounded by her loving family and her friends. And I am joined today by her daughters Beatrice and Margarita Porto and friends Irene and Margarita. Please join me in adjourned our today's meeting in her honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue, and to the Porto's family, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, our deepest condolences. Thank you. Are there any other adjourned motions, members? If not, I do have one. I want to thank SEIU 721 for being here this morning, as we adjourn in the memory of my dear friend, Hilda Garcia Martinez. Hilda passed away on Sunday, February 16th, peacefully among her families and her family and her close friends. She was born on June 22nd, 1973, in Los Angeles, and grew up in Ranise in the San Fernando Valley. She was just 43 years old. Many of you know her through her work with SEIU, but maybe with her time in working with the City's Grid Program and even further back when she worked for, as a field deputy for then-State Senator Sheila Kiel. I first met Hilda in 1998, when I was running a Senate campaign in the San Fernando Valley along with Alex Padilla, and we were looking for a receptionist to help us. We were just kids doing really big things, learning about the power of grassroots organizing. And I remember we posted a job posting for a receptionist for this campaign, and I remember this woman walked into our campaign office on Victory Boulevard in North Hollywood and said to me, I'm here for the job. I said, well, do you have a resume? She said, no. I'm just here, just put me to work. I know, I can do it. I can get it done. And I remember she walked in, and I said, well, I need someone to answer the phones. And she said, I can answer the phones, I can deliver food, I can do whatever you ask me to do. And one of the things that struck me the most, and I often talked to Alex about this, is the fact that she was so hungry to learn. No matter what it was, no matter what you had her do, she never said no, and she never backed down from a fight. Hilda ended up being our lawn sign coordinator, and she manufactured and put together almost 10,000 lawn signs that she made sure got delivered on time, and that's the kind of people you want helping you on a campaign. Hilda was a doer. She just was. She was- She was the light that light up a room every time she walked into it, and even if the room was dark, she would ask, why is it dark? And she made sure she found that switch and light that room up. Hilda was well-known for her political career. After working on the campaign, which, by the way, we won by 26 votes in 1998, she became the office manager to then-assembly member Sheila Kiel and quickly made her way to a senior field deputy after helping Assemblywoman Sheila Kiel win her Senate campaign in 2000. She worked closely with Senator Kiel on the universal health care bill, and also Hilda's passion project was the Pico Youth Center, bringing attention and resources to adverse youth in the city of Santa Monica, where Hilda not only sat on the board, but also mentored several adverse youth during her free time. Always helping others, mentoring and showing up for young people, she wanted to make sure that young people knew that there was alternatives, and she led by example. Hilda joined the mayor's grid program in 2008. On July 23rd of 2011, little did she know that her life would change forever when she met the love of her life, her husband, Mike Martinez. Hilda always mentioned how blessed she was for meeting Mike and that they dreamed of one day owning a large home big enough for their beautiful goddaughter Luna and their baby, Chabaca, and their whole family to be able to live in. In 2015, Hilda found her new passion at home at SCIU 721 as a political coordinator where she championed and protected workers' rights. Most recently, she helped lead organized workers to successfully lobby in support of the Los, here in City Hall, to further step and protect drivers and recapture lost tax revenue by establishing a 30-an-hour living wage ordinance for residents and drivers here in the city of Los Angeles. And as always, Hilda found another passion project in 2018, helping lead SCIU 721 on their faith caravan, bringing social workers, registered nurses, and other frontline healthcare professionals to the U.S. border, Mexico border, to deliver food, tents, backpacks, sleeping pads, foods, diapers, toiletries, feminine products, clothes, and other donations to the thousands of Central American asylum seekers there at the border. You can read testimonials about her friends that have been posted on Facebook about Hilda doing that trip, and some of the friends would actually post it that that trip actually almost did not happen because Hilda had to convince the Mexican customs to let them into the country, so the trip almost ended even before the aid got to the people that were in Mexico. It was Hilda who faced off with the custom agents and pleaded their case to make sure that the aid was actually going to get to the people that needed it. And every SCIU member who was there was able to provide people who were living in its worst possible scenario, the basic medical attention and assistance and kindness that they desperately needed. If it wasn't for Hilda, this would never have happened. And just like that, her constant, constant, constant thing that I can say about Hilda is that good things, positive things for our communities, for young people looking to turn their lives around, that's what Hilda was all about. Hilda was a social justice champion who became the voice of the voiceless. You always wanted her on your team because she kept it real, gave everything she had and asked for nothing in return. This is one of the many reasons why I loved her so much. She's gone too soon, but never forgotten. May we honor Hilda by speaking out against injustice when others remain silent so that her memory will live forever. Hilda is survived by her loving husband who never left her sight, Mike Martinez, her parents, Antonieta and Oscar Garcia Senior, her in-laws, Mona and Michael Martinez Senior, her big sister, and her little brother Daisy and Oscar, her brother, her sister-in-law, Joe and Nancy, her adoring nieces and nephews, Cynthia, Isabella, Joseph, Alec, and Joaquin, and the apple of her eye, her great niece and goddaughter, Luna Olivia. I got to spend some time with Hilda in the hospital before she passed away, and we talked about the good old days. We talked about getting better. We cried, we prayed, and we said goodbye. With that, services for Hilda are tomorrow at the Ward African Methodist Episcopalian Church at 11:17 West 25th Street in Los Angeles. Viewing starts at 11 o'clock in the morning, and the service is at 12. I'm going to miss my friend. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
See no other adjournments, our meeting is adjourned.
I mean, why? In the legislature, you have huge fights, and there's money, interest on each side, and oftentimes you have lobbyists on all sides, but this is probably the one fight that I have seen in the legislature, at least in my lifetime, where there are zero pay lobbyists on the public side. Let's take a look for a second. I don't think that we ever had a lobbyist. I don't think that anybody from any firm stood up and walked the halls and knocked. Think about this. This is a bill where people powered, where a people-powered movement took on a huge financial industry, where they hired many lobbyists, where they knew exactly how the place operated, where they extended their tentacles into almost every office, and people power-